I would like to call the meeting of the Henderson City Council to order at 6:00 P. M. This eighteenth day of November, two thousand and twenty-five. I declare a quorum as present and declare that the notices have been legally posted pursuant to the Open Meetings Act. If you would, would you please stand for our invocation led by Councilman Jackson and remain standing for the pledges led by Councilwoman Martin?
About his normal hearts. Father God, we come for you right now thanking you for this occasion that we should be together for the city of Henderson. Lord bless the city, bless the county, bless the state and these United States that we may move forward in your will. In Jesus's name we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated. Okay. At this time, we will have, I have one citizen's comment. I have Mrs. Crystal Clay. Oh, there you are. Yes, would you step up to the podium, please? Yes, you have three minutes.
Okay. Okay, first, I want to come back and let everybody know that what I'd been working on for the last couple of years of bringing the therapy for kids with autism to our area. We finally have made the connection and that is actually coming true. There is a group, a medical group out of Louisiana that we hosted here this month into our town to do a site visit to see if we would be one of their selected locations. They were over, let's say their council said overly enthusiastic on the extreme warm welcome that they got. And with that, I want to say thank you, Gina Juarez, for representing the city and the city council. They, you know, they really appreciated that. Russell Brown, I want to definitely thank him for meeting with them as well. Shelby Jacobs spent some time with them also through HEDCO. Century Twenty-One kind of took them and saw a few places. And Brian Bowman with Henderson I S D along with all the great employees that are with the town has all came together and helped. They are looking to get here as soon as possible, so we are working on any kind of negotiations that we can find for them for temporary base. They do want permanency, but we do not have anything that they are looking for, which is about fifteen thousand square feet with about eighty parking places. So right now, we are just getting them here and they will start training and locally putting in a start of twenty practitioners. They will be offering P T O T speech and behavior for adolescents to get them school-ready. So it's an early intervention to get them to help the schools. They did meet with the school districts and they felt that this is definitely a place for them. So this is really just to kind of let, hi, I'm, I'm, that's a little, little Annabelle. So this was just to let you know and one thank you for helping with this. And now it's just kind of going to be up to the community to welcome them, help them, get it, you know, staffed. And that's pretty much it.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. Thank you for that. Okay, so we will move on. There are no more citizens comments. We'll move on to presentations and announcements. First thing we have is an oath of office to persons duly elected to the following offices by no opposing candidates or applications submitted. City Councilmen One, Mr. Strong. District Four, Mr. Scoggins. And District Five, Ms. Juarez. So I guess at this time, y'all can follow the judge.
All right, I want to get you each to raise your right hand, please. Do each of you solemnly swear that you have not directly or indirectly paid, offered, promised to pay, contributed or promised to contribute any money or thing of value or promised any public office or employment for the giving or withholding of a vote at the election at which you were elected. So help you God. Mr. Scoggins, would you raise your right hand, sir, and be sworn? I Lee Scoggins do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of Councilman for District Four for the city of Henderson in the state of Texas. And I will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect and defend the laws and constitution of the United States and of this state and the charter and ordinances of this city. So help me God. Congratulations, sir. Councilman Strong, sir, would you raise your right hand and be sworn? I Stephen Strong do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of Councilman for District One for the city of Henderson in the state of Texas. And I will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect and defend the constitution and laws of the United States and of this state and the charter and ordinances of this city. So help me God. Congratulations, sir. Councilwoman Juarez, will you raise your hand, ma'am, please? I Gina Juarez do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of Councilwoman for District Five for the city of Henderson in the state of Texas. And I will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect and defend the constitution and laws of the United States and of this state and the charter and ordinances of this city. So help me God. Congratulations.
Well, we'll have all the council come down. Oh, that's good. I'm good. Trying to stay my steps. Hey, we're good. Y'all can go back, council. I have a proclamation here. Y'all going to? Okay, at this time, we have a proclamation from the city. Okay, this is National Diabetes Awareness Month. If you guys from four H will come up, I'd like to present this to y'all. Stand there and then I'll do this. If I can, maybe they can hear me, hopefully. We'll get this all situated in a minute. Yeah. Diabetes is a serious and costly disease that affects over thirty-eight million Americans with around ten percent of Russ County residents diagnosed with the disease, including many residents of Henderson. This disease can lead to severe complications such as heart disease, kidney failure, vision loss, amputation and premature death. Early detection, losing weight, eating healthy, regular physical activity and access to quality medical care are essential to prevent diabetes and manage the health of those living with the disease. Education, community awareness and support for individuals with diabetes can reduce its impact and improve quality of life. National Diabetes Awareness Month is observed each November to raise awareness about the risk of diabetes, promote healthy lifestyles and encourage community programs that provide education, prevention and support those affected. The Healthy Texas Youth Ambassador Program and the city of Henderson are committed to promoting diabetes awareness, encourage healthy living, support local programs and improve the overall health of our community. Therefore, I Henry Pace, Mayor of the city of Henderson, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the month of November as a month of recognition and encourage all citizens to join me in the effort to confront, fight and most importantly, change the future of those with this deadly disease. Okay, moving to our next item. It's the appointment of Mayor Protem. And I think Ms. Juarez has done a great job in the role that she has filled over the past couple of years, or the last year, excuse me. I would like to get a motion, if I could, to have her appointed as Mayor Protem.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Okay, that was Mr. Jackson with the motion, Mr. Cersei Strong with the second. All right. So at this time, item five, we will convene into executive session to consult with the city attorney in accordance with Vernon's Texas Government Code of Annotated. At six nineteen P. M.
He got a big old building in the back there. Made workshop out of it and got electricity to it. No, it was because when I got here, I was an inspector. Me and Billy met with a guy, remember? We battled it out and we win. And Billy, he was too close to property line. The house he wanted to put there was too big to reduce it out down. So that's two thousand and eighteen when he built that house.
That's basically, yeah, it happened right when we moved.
It wasn't sixteen.
It wasn't sixteen.
Eighteen meant somebody had to change. They should change it. They, I got a new house. Yep, seven, that's right. Now, this is individual. This is a guy and he just, and his wife was a teacher. And when he started building houses, his wife was a man. And they went to divorce, like, they're in the house.
This is a different house, though.
Is that one of them called? Was it a two-story house? Yeah, no, that's the house. Look in the backyard.
People that, people that did this, they were talking over a bit. Replace this house, though. That, that's, that other little building back there. It may be close to it. I think it sounds like a situation. On that corner. Go from the West Main exit on two streets of. People that did that, people that did that have a two-story house. It's the corner where Jeff and, that's where they live. Yeah, it's, it was two-story.
Just like his right, just right here, right next door to the house that burned.
Okay, this one, there was a house on this corner that burned.
But that boy, that old boy, he didn't mind. It was right next to his. You know who I'm talking about, that old boy that crossed street from your house?
Yeah. Yeah, 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 yeah. Straight from, that's a crossing, yeah. On the left. That was the lot. Yeah, that's the one you're thinking of. It's just, it's just where I'm talking about, the one that, when I was just talking about the hall, the guy can't build a brick. Yeah, okay. Yeah, it's on the left, but a lot is where that burned.
Left of him.
Left of him, that house. Yeah, that's, that's the one you're talking about.
That ain't his house?
No.
Okay. Well, he's on another corner.
Before that catacor.
Yeah, yeah.
My house is on the right and it's across the side of that corner. I was gonna say, it might, it might be twenty sixteen when it happened. It was right before, yeah. Because we, because, because we moved, we moved from over there in twenty seventeen. One year, it was every one year while we lived over there.
You're right, you're right.
But anyway, that, that, that catacor.
Yeah, I know where that is.
Anyway, had like a woman built this house and had like a plate on it. I think it was more like a, don't they do modular?
Painted home, they're modular.
Well, they do like a, yeah, like a kit or something like that.
Yeah, they do.
It was kind of a building like that and they must, it must basically be a modular. I think it mostly was me a modular because it had to, Clayton will do like a modular. The way that one construction was me a modular. I remember seeing that thinking, that's the way it's built. I always thought of them.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Modular can look just like.
They can.
Right, you know what I mean? It's just that four plan with modular, so.
You're right.
Know that one, you're talking about. I think it ended up going for two fifty-two.
That's about right, it should be.
And this one now, I'm not saying this one. It was a little, little, was probably a little bigger than the one that they built. Still going down by two fifty. That's about what you're gonna get. I was, he kind of moved one on each side.
That's what I tell you, but the only down, I tell you, you start getting three, three and a quarter. I don't think he's gonna do, he goes, that's what I want to do. Yep. That's what they give for Russian gun. That local builder won't build there. She's talking.
He's talking to her now.
Oh, yeah. There you go. She grabbed him now, didn't she? That's right, that's right.
We hear them, we hear talking.
Uh-huh. I mean, she caught on him.
You're in the community, little buddy. And while you're over your barn side, I'm over.
We'll come see you tomorrow. He gonna shake her off, he's like a flea, he's gotta hold her off. Yeah.
You know what I mean?
He tried to.
I'll be, I'll be back.
That racks, that's, that's what I do.
Try, do your best, try.
Yeah.
I don't know, that, that, no, ain't working, man.
He figured it out, ain't he? I'm like, what is that, that scared you, did it get you?
I was waiting, I was just waiting.
You wait, you come out of elevator, you go up the elevator? Can you go up the elevator and open it, and you're looking right at it, boy? Hey, it's, it's awesome, buddy. Hey, I appreciate it, a lot of people, I took it down, they need to put it back up. Yeah, it's cool, man, appreciate you.
Hey.
Hello, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
I'm good, I'm good.
Well, no, my daughter does all the time, so, she's actually coming home right now, so. I'll see you.
All right, have a nice day.
You too.
What's up, Eric? So, did you get it? Yeah. Do we need to go back over there?
I worked three of the sun.
I know. What time's it close?
Seven.
Really?
I don't know, maybe eight.
Okay.
Oh, Brandy just messaged me. Want to head over to her house for a martini later weekend.
What?
Want to go over to Jay's house after for a martini.
Okay. We can sure do that. Trouble and trouble.
All right, thank you. We will convene with our regular session at 6:42. We'll move on to our consent agenda. This contains routine and non-controversial items. There are items the council would like to move into regular session. Are there any items that we would like to move into regular session? If not, could I get a motion?
Number nineteen and twenty, I have questions on.
That's where we'll get to.
Okay, okay, okay. All right.
There's just one question that I want to pose. If y'all want to pull the item, that's fine, but it's just a simple question.
Okay.
On the financials for the head co., would it be able to just get a one sheet P and L to add to this? Yeah. Because we, some folks want to read it and just have some hard times with it, and I want to just simplify that.
All right. Okay.
Well, that's it. I'll make a motion for approval. Unless Gina wants it.
Okay. Mr. Cersei makes the motion, and Ms. Juarez seconds it. All in favor, say aye. All right, consent agenda is approved. Okay, moving into our regular session. Item number eleven. Consent and possible action upon resolution twenty twenty-five dash eleven dash zero one to deny SWEP Co.'s rate increase request.
Okay, council, this is, SWEP Co. comes a lot of times to us annually or every other year with their rate increase request. Ultimately, you have three options. You can either deny the rate increase. You can push it for thirty days, or you can approve it. If you deny it, ultimately, it's going to go to the PUC, and then they're going to go ahead and do what they do with the rate change anyway. But it does hold off on the rate increase for as long as it can from our perspective within the city because of your action if you deny it. And SWEP Co. generally is perfectly fine with that. That's what they say do. We've seen that and done that before, those of you that have been here. So, my suggestion would be just to deny the rate increase request for SWEP Co. at this time.
I move to approve the resolution denying the SWEP Co. rate increase.
All right, Mr. Cersei made the motion. Mr. Strong seconded it. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. All right, item eleven passes. Moving to item twelve. Consideration and possible action upon the disbursement of three hundred and forty-six votes for the City of Henderson on the Rusk County Appraisal District Board of Directors for twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven term. We have any questions, Ms. Jimmerson? All right, Mr. Cersei made the motion. Mr. Strong seconded it. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Item number twelve carries. Item thirteen. Consideration and possible actions upon the recommendation for seven members of the Historic Landmark Preservation Committee. Jimmerson?
Mr. Mayor, the list that we've chosen, or the people we've chosen is Liz Thrasher, Dustin Culpepper, Sherry Baker, Rochelle Thrasher, Sarah Sherland, Cindy Walker, and Linda Watkins. And I'm making, for the preservation board. And I make a motion we accept those nominations.
Mr. Strong made the motion. Ms. Juarez seconded it. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Item fourteen carries. Moving to item fourteen. Consideration and possible actions upon recommendation for a vacancy on the Main Street Board.
Mr. Mayor, we had a, I'm happy to report that we had a real go-getter, it seemed, on that particular interview. And the committee would like to recommend Reese Duddy to that position on Main Street Board.
All right, Mr. Strong made the motion. Ms. Juarez seconded it. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Item fourteen carries. Item number fifteen. Consideration and possible action upon a recommendation on the reappointment of two members on the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Mr. Mayor, we want to reappoint Scott Drody and Chad Boatright to that board, please. And I make a motion.
Second.
Mr. Strong made the motion. Mr. Cersei seconded it. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Item fifteen carries. Moving to item sixteen. Consideration and possible action upon a recommendation on the reappointment of two members of the Board of Adjustments.
Mr. Mayor, likewise, Board of Adjustments, we've all met and decided Cecilia Coke and Alton Prior would be individuals for that board. And I make a motion.
My second.
Mr. Strong made the motion. Mr. Jackson seconds it. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. All right, that motion carries. Moving to item seventeen. Consideration and possible action upon counseling the December sixteenth, twenty twenty-five council meeting. Ms. Jimmerson?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Juarez made the motion. Mr. Cersei seconded it. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. All right, item seventeen carries. Okay, item eighteen. Consideration and possible action upon the performance agreement between Head Co. and the Henderson Boys Baseball Association. Mr. Gardella.
Evening, Council Mayor. As y'all are aware, since we became a type B corporation, we can have a few more touches.
Have any?
How about now?
There we go.
Go through it again?
No. Good.
I'll second that, but just one question, and it's slightly unrelated. Are we going to look at annexing that property now at any point soon? Since we own it? We should be able to. Even with it being the highway frontage? It can't be around it. Though it's changed, so you can't. Okay. We'll talk about it. We'll look at the detail and see if that can happen. I was just curious, because that, that would help in collecting sales taxes on that, anything they have out there.
Yeah, it would help clear up several things, law enforcement stuff, all those type of things, so, for sure.
All right, I second.
All right, Ms. Juarez made the motion, and Mr. Cersei seconded it. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Item eighteen carries. Item nineteen. Consideration and possible action upon performance agreement between Head Co. and Bain Investments Holdings. Mr. Gardella.
So, this was a daisy chain of events to help out keeping the Railroad Commission here. They had, their lease was expiring, and they were going to relocate back over to Kilgore. And the property owner, Bain Investments, suggested that he would be more than willing to vacate his space to renovate the space that he was in to increase the opportunity for the Railroad Commission to stay here and bring in additional jobs. In order to do that, obviously, Bain Investments needed a location to go to. They had a location down on seventy, nine?
Seventy-nine.
Okay, I was getting them wrong, so sorry about that. So, they had a location to head to down there, but obviously, they needed to make some renovations to it. They approached us because we wanted to keep the Railroad Commission here and gain the additional jobs out of that. And they needed some assistance to renovate their location. The monies that we're putting into this project are all front-facing, so we're treating it, in essence, like a grant that is going to beautify the property and everything will face the street. But that's what precipitated all of this, in this agreement, to happen. It was really, we needed to keep one business here, and in order to do that, we had to move another one. In order to do that, we had to renovate the space.
I withdraw my question. He answered what I needed to know. Second.
Made the motion. Mr. Strong seconded it. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Okay, item nineteen carries. Item twenty. Consideration and possible action upon a performance agreement between Head Co. and Sadler Powder Coating LLC. Mr. Gardella.
So, this was an opportunity for us to work with a local family who just doesn't happen to have this business in our city limits. The challenge that they had was they needed to expand, didn't necessarily have all the resources to do it. But they live here, shop here in Henderson, and it's my understanding that most of their employees live here in town. We checked with the state because of their location and being that they're outside of our city, but they are in Rusk County. And without the county having the ability, through an economic development office, to help them, our connections at the state said, if your board determines that you can help that business to grow, and it's in the best interest of Head Co. and the community, then you can do so. If you've read through the agreement, it's, our commitment to them is less than ten percent of what they are looking to do, and it's based on job creation and maintaining the jobs for, I think it was a period of three years, if memory serves me correctly. Twenty-four months, excuse me. So, that's what this is all about. I know that they've already finished out one of the buildings that they have, and they're working on another one. So, we believe that it was a good investment. The secondary part of this is that they're, they've given us permission to work with them on our marketing because they also work in the space and aerospace industry, which is something we're starting to pursue, as y'all know. And so, having them be able to recommend us to some of the businesses they work with has opened some doors.
Mr. Mayor, I withdraw my second question. He's done a good job and answered that already, so, ready discussion? Any more discussion? I'll make a motion.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Strong made the motion. Ms. Juarez seconded it. All in favor? Say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Item twenty carries. Item twenty-one. Consideration and possible actions upon the performance agreement between Head Co. and the Wiseman Ministries. Mr. Gardella.
This is really about creating a new retail opportunity within the city for Wiseman Industries, as well as getting one of our entry locations to have some rehabilitation done to it. If you're probably aware, if you've driven up Kilgore Highway, they've scraped the site, and they'll be starting to construct their new building rather soon. It's going to be ten thousand square feet of retail space. It's going to be a combination of both new product and gently-used product, but they will be collecting sales tax on it. And they believe that, if memory serves me correctly, the number, they're looking at about forty thousand dollars a year that will come in in sales tax for the city. So, it isn't a large amount, but it's a great amount because, as you know from Wiseman Industries, they also use these facilities to help train and keep their folks on the straight and narrow. So, between that and what we've asked them to do in the beautification, because it's on that north side, heading south into the city, we wanted it to look good. They've agreed to do that, and so that's why the board invested in this one.
Question, questions? Motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, all right. Mr. Strong made the motion. Ms. Juarez seconded it. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Item twenty-one carries. Item twenty-two. Consideration and possible action upon performance agreement between Head Co. and First Methodist Church. Mr. Gardella.
And I feel bad that I'm monopolizing your time, but we had a lot of these that came up that we, as you know, we're going to bring in front of you as we move forward in the future, so, please indulge me. First Methodist Church and their preschool program down the road serve over a hundred and twenty families within our city. They employ between thirty to thirty-five teachers. They have an issue with their retaining wall on their back property, and they approached us to fix part of it. And we suggested they go back, and if we were going to assist them, that they fix all of it and get it done properly. They agreed to do that, and they've turned in the work, the scope of work that they're doing on it. And again, we are only in for fifty percent of their scope of work. Scope of work was about sixty-five. We suggested to them that we would be in for thirty-two-five out of that, but they also have to maintain the teaching positions for a period of not less than five years. And they didn't believe that that was going to be an issue because they've been around for a very long time. But it is something that we wanted to support and help. And subsequent to that, I can let you know that the financial institution next door has also reached out to us because their retaining wall is needing some work as well. So, we may be back in front of you with that.
Mr. Mayor, as being one of the families that is served by this preschool, I'm going to announce that I'm abstaining for any discussion or the vote.
Mayor, because I'm the one that presented that to the Head Co. Committee, I'm going to abstain from the vote as well.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not compromised by it at all. And I make a motion that we approve this.
Okay.
Before the rest of us drop out, I'll second it.
All right, Mr. Jackson made the motion. Mr. Strong seconded it. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. All right, moving on to item number twenty-three. Consideration and possible action upon a performance agreement between Head Co. and the Henderson Civic Center Incorporated. Mr. Gardella.
Thank you, sir. As y'all are aware, we value our Civic Center very highly. We know how much it means to the community and who they attract, and what we use it for, what the city uses it for. It's an important piece of property for us to maintain, and in order to do that, they approached us for some needs for some internal improvements. And so, the board agreed to assist them to the tune of fifty thousand dollars to help fix the meeting room space, and if memory serves me correctly, replacing the carpet in the offices and boardroom space. I'm not sure if that work has started yet. We were there last night. I don't believe it has, but that is our commitment to them to make sure that we can keep this Class A facility a Class A facility.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve item number.
Twenty-three.
My second.
Mr. Strong made the motion. Mr. Jackson seconded it. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Twenty-three passes. All right, item twenty-four. Consideration and possible action upon a performance agreement between Head Co. and Brasso Development and Construction LLC.
Yes, sir. Again, as y'all are very well aware, this is the kickoff of our housing project on, along Evenside. And this agreement, we would have had to have manipulated the nine acres to get it shovel-ready for someone, anyway. And the developer came in and said, you know, if we can work out a function with them, he'd be happy to manipulate the site. So, that's what this agreement is all about. It also offers the developer the opportunity to go vertical with housing, with a price range not to dip below two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. And we're trying to keep it at or below our median household price, which is about three-ten. So, that's, that was the importance of the board on how we're going to start to create housing again in the city because as we start to grow and recruit, we need to have housing available. So, that's what this project is all about. The developer does have the ability to expand from the initial five acres that he's working on to the southern five, based on him selling his first house and him exercising that option. And then on the south five of Evenside, once he has gone vertical and sold the house there, then he also has an eighteen-month option at his discretion to exercise on the thirty-five acres across the street. This may be modified because it seems like there are some drainage issues that we have to look at on the property that we own across the street, which is impacting the nine acres on the west side of Evenside. So, this may be altered, but the important part is that we are working with him to move forward, to get some houses built, and he's ready to go vertical. In this agreement, it does state that we have asked him to hire as many local contractors and operators as possible, as well as buying most of his material local. And I know he's taken that to heart, and he's already had some negotiations with a couple of the building supply companies in town, as well as he's posted online and had several conversations with some of the subcontractors who are looking to get involved in this project.
Mayor, I will need to abstain from this vote due to banking issues. I guess because of my banking employer, I should say.
We have any more questions? Motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Mr. Jackson made the motion. Mr. Strong seconded it. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Item twenty-four carries. Item twenty-five. Consideration and possible action upon Head Co. Budget Amendments Number Two.
A lot of this is just based on the fact that our budget, our work scope increased so much last year that items were fluid. For example, the Brasso Development, we didn't have that ability when I was first hired under last year's budget to move forward with a housing project. We did halfway through my tenure, so we were able to go ahead and get that into the budget. The, I mean, you could see the layout on here. Office expenses went up a little bit. The contract labor went up because when the previous director retired, the board paid out his, we call it paid time off now, that he had had accrued. And we had a little bit of a discrepancy in what we paid to the city because what was considered our contract labor number did not include the insurance and TMRS and other benefits that we get, which we also reimburse the city back for. So, our number was light when we started, and that's what we needed to have on this amendment. And I think that pretty much takes us through, I mean, I'm happy to answer any other questions about some of these items on here, but a lot of things have changed. We're being very aggressive now, as y'all know. We have a very aggressive marketing campaign, recruitment campaign, and all of those things just cost a little bit more.
Do we have any more questions about item twenty-five for Mr. Gardella? Could I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept item number twenty-five, the amendment to number two.
Ms. Juarez made the motion. Mr. Jackson seconded it. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Item twenty-five carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our departmental reports. We may deliberate and make any inquiries into the items listed in the departmental reports, if there are any.
Council, I did an updated report for you. I emailed it earlier, but I did, I went ahead and printed out a hard copy so you'd have it with you here this evening, just with updates as of all the way through this evening, or yesterday evening, with the orientation and all that's in there. Just want to be as up-to-date as possible, not three weeks past, so. So, that's there for you. And it looks like we have Ms. Arnall at the microphone.
That's another smile that's too big.
It's this button or something?
There you go.
Oh, the green, it's the green light. But yeah, this will be my last, last one. I've enjoyed it. Moved here in nineteen seventy-six. So, I was like, oh, I'm one year from being here fifty years. But, and then when I moved here, of course, I was thirteen, and I was like, where is Henderson, Texas? And then I was like, when I'm eighteen, I'm out of here. Still here. So, took, took me a few years to get out of here, but of course, lots of good memories. And I'll miss it. We'll come back. I've got to bring back my grandbaby to show. And, um, I'll miss it. We'll come back. I've gotta bring back my, my grandbaby to show her off, so
There you go.
We'll be making several trips back. We'll try to hit a Tuesday, a third Tuesday of the month, and come in and see how things are going. But I have enjoyed it. There's some new faces up here. Um, Mr. Schoggins, his mom was my math teacher, and she did not discourage me from my enjoyment of math, so I still enjoy math, still enjoy numbers. Um, appreciate her, um, leading me in that, um, direction. But, um, yeah, it's been, it's been great. And so, if you have any questions on the financials, Stephanie is here to answer
Not even ask you a question, right?
Now that you mention it.
You're gonna withdraw your question that you had. Um, but yeah, no, she's doing great. Um, officially, the last day will be tomorrow, but I will still be coming up and kinda helping her out still. I'm not just gonna leave her and say, "See ya." I won't, I won't change my phone number either. And I guess I'll figure out what it is like living on Tulsa time. Cause that's what, I don't know what that is. I hope that doesn't mean you have to be early to, to be on time. That's what I'm hoping, so, thank y'all.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mayor, if I might, one last thing on, um, um, with departmental reports, just really a brag on our, um, on our staff and our crews on the syrup festival, because, you know, if y'all went, hopefully, you made it out there. Um, we got a lot of folks. I haven't heard the actual, the numbers, uh, uh, what, uh, you know, I know we're still working on that, but, um, I heard a lot of positive comments from people. I've not heard anything negative come my way, so I just appreciate what everybody does. It seems like a well-oiled machine. Um, and, you know, uh, people like me get to just go and enjoy it and, um, and, um, and walk around and have a good time with our, uh, with our citizens and our guests, and, and it's always just a pleasure. It has been for me from when I was a little boy running around, you know, um, and Karen had me in the, in the nursery over here, so that's what was wrong with me. Right? Yeah, that's how long she's been around. I've been around too. Yeah. Drop me on my head, that's what's wrong. Yeah.
I, I can help you a little bit because the parking down East Main going towards seventy-nine, it was way more than it has been in the last seven or eight years. I've had the house there ten years now.
Yeah.
It was at least four blocks down. There were more cars parked four blocks down than there had been in years.
Yep. The redesign kinda spread things out, so as many people are there, it still felt, felt like it, you had some room. So, it's continuing to expand, so, um, job well done, Stephanie, and then into Christina, brand-new into that role, so she's moving to the Civic Center out. Outstanding.
Good job, good job. Did a great job. Whole city did. Nothing else. Where is Melissa? She probably wants to adjourn the meeting, right? Oh, she's already out.
Hold on.
Start a new tradition here.
I'll adjourn.
That's why I've been so quiet tonight. Mr. Mayor, I vote that we, um, adjourn this meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye. We're adjourned. Have a good evening.
Hey, that's the way I was for a while, so.